I invite you all to join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Now listen, you finished the boiler, didn't you?
I don't have an agenda. I don't have an agenda. That says December nineteenth. I know you sent it to me.
Okay, we need to approve the December nineteenth, uh, regular meeting minutes.
Didn't want to went over there to pick one up.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye. Aye, motion passed.
I did when I got here, I went over.
I haven't been back over there, Debbie, so these are the same ones. I hate to tell you.
You approved both of the minutes and?
We just did minutes. Both minutes? No, not. We only did the one of the minutes, then we're going to call them next time.
We have one claim that has come in, and it is for A and H Chapman Mechanical giving an amount of fifty-three thousand, six hundred dollars. They entertain a motion to that.
Motion to approve it, huh?
Second. I have a motion and a second to pay this claim. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Yeah, man. Uh, agenda, the next item is Carrollton Township Advisory Board Appointment. Yes, ma'am, how are you this morning?
I'm doing well, and yourself? Okay, so I'm not sure this has ever happened in Carroll County before.
I'm trying to remember.
It has. It's been a while because I couldn't find anything to reference back to. So on the twenty-twenty-two general ballot, you didn't have enough advisory board members run on Carrollton. Normally, it's a holdover. But the two that didn't run both want the position, and one's a Republican and one's a Democrat. So that now falls in your hands under IC Code three dash thirteen dash ten dash six point five. You are required to appoint one of those two members to retain their position on the board.
Did they send letters in saying they wish to retain it?
Uh, I have heard from one of them. I have not heard from the second one. Only heard through the second one, the Democrat has contacted the actual township trustee and made his desires known. I have not received anything. I've only heard from the Republican, um, office holder. So I don't... I'm only going by the information that I was told. So I thought even if the Democrat candidate is not wanting the position, I think this is the safer route to go. So that removes any impropriety that might linger out there.
So will you put these people in place today?
Um, you do not have to put anyone in place today. Uh, the board is sufficient enough to make decisions. You can put it on... The IC Code requires a ten-day notice. Um, I know you've received notice, um, from Beth. But I don't believe it's been ten days. So you will not be able to make a decision today per the IC Code, but you could put it on the next.
Let me make sure I understand.
Okay.
There's three people on an advisory board.
Correct.
There were only two people that ran in the election on the ballot.
Two people, two advisory board members ran. One of them was a newcomer. So he is an independent, and then the other one was a current one that also ran.
But there are two who have been on the board.
That are currently, yes, that were currently on the board.
And both of them would like to have that one spot that's left open.
Correct. And because the seat is... Yeah, there's a Republican and a Democrat. At the time of the election, there were two Republican seats and a Democrat seat. So a new Republican ran and a current Republican ran. So that, but now you still have a current Republican and the current Democrat that want that seat. So it doesn't default to the Democrat because no one ran. It defaults that both board members can be considered a holdover. Um, because they don't have to run, you can be a holdover. But because, like, if just one of those members wanted to be the holdover, they could have been pulled up, held over, and there would have been no action you needed to take. But because two current members want the position, it doesn't default to one party or the other based on the election results.
There's nothing incumbent on us to make, uh, either... Do you consider him a Republican, right? I mean, we would consider him personal.
Correct, but whatever you decide will determine that. That seat. So if one of them were to be unable to fulfill their obligation, that would be filled by the caucus for whatever party.
Does the length of term have anything to do with it? Have either one of these, one been on longer than the other?
I do not know how long they have served prior to.
Is there, like, we set up here, chairman, vice chair, is there that on this board?
No. You have the township trustee and then the three board members under him.
Okay, so I didn't know if they had either, either.
I don't.
If they had rankings.
I don't believe so.
I don't know how that works.
Have you talked to the Democrat at all?
I have left two messages and have not heard anything back.
So we don't even know who wants to be a holdover except for the trustee?
The trustee, yes.
Well, we need to make this decision on that.
Motion to table list since sixteen? Probably have to, because you've got to be in ten days.
If they are, if either of them is really interested in, like, sending water or contacting.
You have, yeah, you have one of them here today.
Yes, sir. You look awfully familiar to me, but I'm.
I'm Richard Stout.
Yeah.
I've been on the board, uh, three terms, I believe it is, and not being a politician, I missed the deadline to file. So that's my only fault, I guess.
Or you would have ran if you.
I'm sorry?
You would have ran if you would have.
Yeah, yes, sir.
And I will do, uh, my best today to get ahold of the Democrat, um, member and either have him contact me with a letter or send one to Beth or an email or at least return.
Get something from whoever's standing there, that's why I think we're automatically.
Well, and also if he does not express a desire to fulfill that position, then Mr. Stout would automatically be the holdover, and there would be no action you would need to take.
We wouldn't take any action.
No, sir.
I can't be here.
I remember you now, we used to talk about, uh, uh, confinement operation.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Well, I appreciate you wanting to be on the board again, and we'll make this decision if it comes to us at the next meeting.
I won't be here on the sixteenth, but I still would appreciate your consideration.
You have certainly fulfilled your obligation coming in today. We're glad to have you come in and speak out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good day, we're ready for Sheriff Tony Lee. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Third in office is bringing you bad news.
To me, do you have another one? Thank you.
Gentlemen, I'm looking forward to working with you for the next four years. However, that paper you have in front of you is something that I inherited along with your newly appointed nine-one-one director. That is a fire, state fire marshal inspection at the jail. There's about ten items uh, from when he was there in October. And it just kind of goes to show the age of the building, I guess you would say. There are things in here like plugs. We can't use the multi-plug things, and we've got to plug them into outlets in the wall, which we don't have. So we're going to figure out how to get these things fixed by February thirteenth. There's a deadline. One of these items in here is a, we have a server, and I think it's nine-one-one server, I'm not sure. But they have a server in one of our electrical panel rooms. The server has to go, has to go out of there. I don't know why these things are a problem now and they weren't several years ago.
Been there forever.
Been like that forever. And I was told, and not that he's wrong, but I was told there was a brand-new fire inspector, and I think he's going to enforce what needs to be enforced, and if we don't have it done by the thirteenth, I believe it says in there, we could be charged two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a day for not having it fixed. Or I suppose the other thing could be to shut us down. I just wanted to get on your agenda to keep you guys in the loop of what was going on over at the building.
Well, we appreciate that, Sheriff, and, uh, looks like you got some work out for you.
They didn't read... Normally, a fire comes in and runs our extinguisher.
Well, there was only one extinguisher that was a problem, and I think they just must have missed it, because all the other ones in there were.
Do you think that one should be corrected already?
Uh, it's going to get, yeah. Yeah, there are other things, like, we made one of, I believe it was an interview room when it was first made, but we turned it into, actually, I believe Mr. Pearson might have worked there, when we turned it into a file room, an inmate file room. And they had to remove the door because the files stuck out past the door. Well, that door has to go back. And I hope we can find the door, because it's probably pretty expensive if it's not handy to go back on. We'll just have to move the files out into a hallway or something. We have no storage at the sheriff's office in general. So a lot of the problems are, as you look through this, there are combustible items in the electrical rooms, in mechanical rooms, things like that, that we have to put there for storage, and that stuff has to come out, so.
I talked to Mr. Spencer this morning outside the, and he said they just went through and cleaned that down there. And I asked him if he noticed about a three-hundred-pound door, and he said it's not there.
I'm going to go double-check myself, just to make sure.
Um, the only other place it would be, Tony, would be in that barn, because I think I helped carry a tin barn when I worked there. That was taken off during the administration, whenever you didn't follow it. If it's not there, they got tossed.
I don't think any of this stuff's going to be cheap, like, that door's expensive.
I don't think you can put it back on, can you?
I hope so. The servers that Brad's going to need to move, that's not going to be cheap to move those servers. I'm, my intentions are to call this fire inspector and see if I can get him to come back up and do a walkthrough with me and see what we can't get worked out. And I don't know if Brad had anything else to add to it or anything.
The only thing I can add is, um, I'm going to be able to do anything with the server room until I figure out a place to put the backup system. We have no backup system installed. I can't unhook the radios and not have any radios for accounting until our backup systems.
Might get an office space down there in the new building where you're at to put them?
I can create one. Right now, it's full of PPE, all the other office spaces are full of PPE supplies and everything else.
I think I have a big good area for the backup for now. Hang on, the building, if I can get you a spot.
I'm going to try to call and get some estimates from REITCOM to see how much it's going to cost to move the servers and then install the backup system wherever we decide to.
Where are you going to put the servers? I've been in that building fifteen years. There's no place for them.
Well, they want you to stitch a cord that runs under the door from one server room to the other server room removed.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I'm going to be paying the price of the two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a day until it's removed.
So I think what Brad's already done over the weekend was, he's kind of started the one McCampell room that has some server stuff in it. He started removing the boxes that are storage stuff in there. And I think his hope, our hope is that that server in the other room that has to go, we can put in the other room, but.
It's going to be tight.
It's going to be very, very tight if they can do it and go.
Well, this reminds me of exactly the situation I've been in a lot of times where the health department comes through and says, "You've got to do these things," and then right after comes a fire inspector that says, "Oh, no, you can't do any of those." And they won't talk to each other, so whatever you do.
Well, and the plugs, the plugs that are in that dispatch room, they said we can't use the extension plugs, that it got to be plugged into a wall. Well, you know, that's computers, cameras, you know, that, there's a reason for each one of those plugs, and it's going to hurt us pretty immensely if we have to unplug a lot of those things. I don't know. I think I'm going to try and maybe get a little Todd Price or somebody to come up and see if they can add plugs in the wall.
I already have to run the conduit on the wall, just like they did with the cameras.
So I just wanted to put you guys in that loop and.
See where we go. We appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Yes.
I wonder, you know, this is dated October. Why just now is it being addressed?
Well, we would ask the gentleman, but he's not here today.
What gentleman?
The sheriff. Ex-sheriff.
Former sheriff?
Former sheriff.
Has, have you not had that report?
No.
Personally?
Maybe about a week or so.
It puts you in a bad situation.
We're all in a bad, I mean, it's everybody in a bad situation.
It's really going to hurt nine-one-one.
Yeah, it's going to be extremely difficult to get this stuff fixed, and maybe very costly.
Only thing is, is that subfloor, maybe they could put some.
I would probably not want fire inspector to pull that floor up.
Yeah, I agree, but that's the only place we can put the extra electrical, is underneath there. Because it's probably, what, ten inches deep, maybe?
Well, um, please do ask him to come up and go through it with you and find out if there is a, uh, you know, which ones have to be done first, and we have to just start working through the list, or if they all have to be done at the same time.
They all have to be done by the thirteenth of February.
I'm hoping maybe we'll bend on that a little bit if you're working towards it.
Yeah, I hope so as well. But they did bend already, if I understand correctly. When they were there in October, I think we had fifteen days to correct all this, and TOE got a ninety-day extension.
It lasted ninety days.
Yeah, so that's what this current is an extension. But again, I plan on talking to him and seeing if we can get something worked out and show him that we're working towards getting what he runs done.
The administration's in and just figured it out.
Correct.
What's your count today?
I haven't been over there yet. It was forty, forty-two and seven out of county, just yesterday, I think.
My news, Deputy Spencer had to go to White County first thing this morning at eight fifteen to go get one from White County. He'd be here at nine o'clock.
Yeah, well, they canceled that, thank goodness, too, because we had an overdose that this morning while he was on his way upstairs, so.
Is this young man sitting with you?
Oh, yeah. Fresh on board with us, Hayden Welch, um, will be a new deputy. Just started brightening early, not even an hour ago, so. We've got some paperwork and stuff to do, but we'll still have three open positions. He's just, he's taken one of four, so.
Three open positions.
Yes.
Well, we appreciate your report, and, uh, with my evidence, we will be coming up in the county jail.
Okay, I'm trying to remember.
Hey, welcome to your third day.
Hope you enjoy your position. We have others, this is a very short agenda here, but we didn't have to waste much ink on this. Other commission actions, two thousand twenty-three appointments. First one up is area plan. And, uh, we had several applicants.
Several applicants.
Hi?
No, I was just asking.
I, uh, I guess I would say that I'm very impressed with some of the people we've got playing. There's really good people in that bunch. And I am, uh, well, I want to vote very, very, uh, pleased with Jeff Watson and want him to continue on there. Fine with you, gentlemen. I know that sometimes Jeff has had difference of opinion with the other ones on there, but that's good. We need, uh, we need varying opinion on there. People that'll look at it and read it and read the rules and come up with, uh, uh, an opinion on it. If it's not just Jeff, shake hands and go on with everybody else. So I, my vote's going to be for Jeff.
Is any other candidates in the room, Mr. Bigman?
Yeah.
Who is a good candidate, too?
Well, and if I can, sure. The reason why I threw my name in is at the time I didn't know that Jeff was wanting to continue. And I, I think Jeff's good on there, but I, I put my name in because I kind of have different opinions, too.
Sure.
But, um, I think Jeff is a good, good person in the position, and personally, I would support Jeff.
Well, on your behalf, I'd say that you served with me on the redevelopment and have been great on there. Often a resource person that I ask you about operating your own, and even though you're new on there, you're up to date better than I am. So, and I appreciate that.
I had one concern that brought to my attention that with him being a builder, conflict of interest. Ted, Ted went through and researched that, and at that time, he says, once he excuses himself from those types of concerns, he can serve on that. So I.
See, I, I find that as an asset, because you're somebody that knows.
Knows what's going on.
Knows that side of it, yeah. I can see how that if, uh, and I haven't seen that happen, but if, if, uh, Jeff was trying to keep out competition or something by his position, that would be, that'd be a wrong position to take. You're like me trying to keep out the number of pizza places that can come into town or something. That's not, you can't use your position for that. But I haven't seen that happen, so. Lauren, do you have a comment?
Well, I think the display is that you keep a hold from the voting, but what's really the purpose? The decisions come up, does he represent us at that point?
Oh, that's what you're extending. We've just lost our representation.
We lost our vote on that. But he's allowed to speak his mind during that before the vote. It's a... Then if he don't excuse himself, then if someone gets put in and changed, are we looking at lawsuits?
We're looking at lawsuits every day.
It's true.
That's why we're there, the insurance company.
No, I have, I have interest to this family. He has experience up Carroll County, but he was familiar there, and he watches things up there, and he may be aware of some things that probably aren't kosher. Not only with the area plan, but other things as far as building codes and that sort of thing. And I think he knows construction. Well, again, he has his pleasure. That's really not bad, yeah. How he do on board, I don't know, but he does have his train. I don't know, Jeff's done a good job. I've got many communications from him that always read it. But if tend to vote.
Jeff, have you ever had a, a situation where you should have not voted, refused yourself, or has that come up on any day?
I had to, I had a rezoning on a pizza property where our office is at. I just stepped aside, of course. I didn't require anybody else to think. I stepped off the side and went right through, of course, the rezoning on the office building. I'm with one of the members of the corporation on the land, and Cameron usually takes care of that. He said, you know, you need to excuse yourself, you know, he'll tell you that before you start. That's kind of his job, make sure things are, meetings are running the way they're supposed to be according to the book. And that's what I'm having trouble with. Some of the, some of the stuff's going on is not being perfect or not perfect. But as the head of VDA held the book up one night and says, "I can only do what's in here. Don't ask me to do anything outside of that." I can do, I want to do what's in here. And we're having trouble right now, and I'm having trouble with how the attorney's interpreting some of the stuff. There's a lot of difference since interpretation has been. So that's why I know it is, I'm in trouble. I have to read the thing to them every now and then and say, you know, what's this mean to you if it don't mean this? I'm sorry, when I read it in here, it says twenty-five hundred square feet per unit. That's what it means. Why are you interpreting it different? And that's why. And that's why, probably.
Well, I agree with you, Jeff, and you go over all of those things very closely and I appreciate your keeping me in the loop on things that I needed to know about. Dale, did you have a comment?
I did, you, whether it's Jeff or whether it's whomever you're talking about, Lauren, the, the area plan has its attorney and they ought to be able to advise there at the meeting whether a member ought to recuse themselves or not. So you have that safeguard and safety net there to, to help the situation out, so that would, that would be one thing to look at, too, I think.
Yeah, that's a good point, yeah. Still lose your vote.
I don't know, John, I didn't get a chance to contact him. Does he have any bills today? When's the next meeting, Jeff, do you know? We'll be here at six ten. It seems like you two really make good decisions. And I, and I didn't get to do all my homework. I could have had it, that's on the family, family sickness column, so I didn't get out much. I'm gonna make a motion to table area plan, you guys have a chance to talk to Mr. Down?
We also have both of them, sure.
Is that?
Yeah, both of them.
Yep, yep. But to me, I feel strongly that you got two commissioners that want two different people. And you guys have done your homework and I failed to do mine because I got sick over the holiday weekend. And I don't like making decisions on medications, so. I'll make yours in table.
Okay, I have a motion to table this appointment until January sixteenth, is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion to table, please say aye.
My apologies, I, I take the line, guys.
Okay, the next one we have up is Twin Lakes Regional Sewer District.
Do we get anybody for that? And we can't reappoint the one we have because he already did his turn. Does it have to be Carroll County, it has to be Carroll County resident for ours, right?
Yeah, we should have one.
That's what this is, it's a Carroll County representative.
Before your time, we, the Twin Lakes Regional Sewer District came into Carroll County and did a lot of stuff and put a lot of rules and everything on Carroll County people and we didn't have anybody on the board. And we commissioners threw a fit enough about it that they finally changed their rules and put one board member from Carroll County. So we want to make sure that we keep that one, that one representative for us. Well, we just have to hold that spot open until we get people that are interested. And then next up, we have curpacy.
You're the representative now.
I'm the representative now, yeah, and.
Would you like to give it?
I'll do it.
I'll make a motion and I'll make go around.
All in favor, say aye. Okay. For those of you who are just looking at the agenda, curpacy is a Kankakee, Iroquois, something, I forget.
Regional, regional.
What is it?
Kankakee, Iroquois, regional.
Planning.
Yes, commission, planning commission, yeah.
Which does our grant, some, some of our grant. It's not all, we have some people like our emergency management that do all their own and that's good. But it's a good organization, we belong to it. Laura has a representative on it, I don't know if anybody else sent one to it or not.
Delphi.
Who is it from Delphi?
I think it's the mayor.
I have seen her there, I've stopped and think about it. The guy from Florida, all the time, every week.
Ken and Delmon.
Who's that?
I believe it was Andy Robinson. I think he's ready.
I don't know, I usually, you know, usually see the gentleman from Florida, I read who there is, so. Okay, let's go on. County Attorney Ted Johnson, Highway Office Manager, Work From Home, now, he's not here to tell us because he's ill.
And I don't have any pay to work, so that needs to be tabled.
So we're gonna just have to bypass that and.
We'll table it.
Pardon me?
Table it to the next meeting.
Yeah. Highway Department Internal Policies, that might have to do with the work from home, doesn't it?
Well, part of it, that he gave you internal policies to look over.
I remember getting them, didn't you?
Yeah, so it sounds like we need to table those, too.
Yeah, we need to table those, both. Mostly the ones.
All in favor? Motion passed. Other county businesses, turning out to come up, yes, ma'am?
I do, she's the representative.
That's why I was still sitting here. Okay, so I did turn in the invoice for the fencing for the election equipment.
Yeah.
However, we hit a little bit of a problem. They couldn't secure the top of the fencing to the wall because of the, it was, it was causing a problem with the integrity of the walls because they're very brittle. So in order to get that secured, that will pass the security points, they're gonna need to add, they currently only did the two fencing areas. They're gonna have to completely put the other two sides that are up against the wall now, they're gonna have to add the fencing to secure that top.
To the backside where the wall would be?
Yes, so that will add an additional three hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty-three cents to the bill. They were not going to charge any labor because that was an unforeseen issue, they're only charging for the, the equipment.
So you got portions of it, and you got one section that's open back by the wall?
Well, it's, it's, the side is secured to the wall, but there's a gap at the top on the two, the sides that touch the walls. There's a gap of, depending on where you're at, anywhere from a foot to eight and a half inches.
What a fair gap.
So someone could theoretically crawl up on top of it and get in.
Do you get the cameras there, too, to do that?
The cameras are not on it currently, actually, I don't, I'm not required to have those camered now, I don't have to have it under surveillance. I'm going to, but we have to figure out a different system, what we have now is hardwired and I can't get it up there.
Would we pay that on a, do you recall?
The security would have been, you would have had that since two thousand twelve.
I don't know.
So, but it's hardwired and it's in the basement.
No, not the, the, how do we pay for the fencing?
You have the invoice, I don't believe, it's probably been paid just yet.
Eight thousand, oh, six, probably.
No, the, the fencing was four thousand and something.
Yeah.
And then, like I said, an additional, I have a new invoice for the, the additional.
I don't recall when we paid that, no.
You, yeah, I don't know what you were paying it out of, but if we haven't paid it, you have not paid it yet.
So it was probably out of the, which, if you have an invoice from December?
Yes.
And you didn't cover that from the renovation of the courthouse.
That's where we took it from.
I believe so. The first was second base, and I need that invoice so we can encumber.
The second one.
Both of them, well, are they both Decembers?
This one is actually January first, the one he dated this one.
Okay, well, it'll have to come out this year's and then the other can come out next year.
But you have that, I turned that one in to your office two weeks ago, so.
When we got that, I'm not worried about that, I'll make a motion.
You still have a copy of it, though, can I have a copy of it?
I said we have to have the final approval.
Okay, so the motion and a second to approve the additional amount of three hundred and.
Forty-four dollars and sixty-three cents.
Three forty-four, sixty-two, fifty-two, you're quite right, but anyway, I'll throw the dime in if I want.
Bless you.
Sixty-three.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Anything else to come before the board?
Look, I'm good. Carroll Manor, haven't heard anything lately, what were we at on there, making good progress and things okay out there now?
I wish I could tell you that we're making good progress, where things are happening. Carroll Manor is the question. Martha is, is retiring as of the last day of the month. And that is a, a tough one for the county because she's been so good for so long there and cared so much. She hired a assistant who is not necessarily going to become the, the supervisor, yeah. Because we have to post that opening and take applications for it. She's, of course, in the running for it. The council did not approve the assistants paid for this year, so I don't know how that's working out. We asked to have, there are openings out there for staff, so we asked to have her put down off it as a staff person so she could get paid something, it would be as high as what she was for it, as an assistant supervisor.
And she went from full-time class to part-time class.
Yeah, we should protect her insurance. So we're trying.
When do we make a decision on that, move, to move the person in the position?
Well, we haven't even got any, when will we take, make a decision on who the new supervisor is? We haven't got any applications in yet, haven't we?
I just got permission last Friday to post the job from them, and so we're going to do that, but she is going to get paid from, our pay goes into January from December, so she is going to get something the next two paychecks at her regular pay. So then they asked, council has authorized me to do an additional, so much money to at least go through January or through a certain, I can't remember what day. I've had so many meetings and so many, no, we're not doing this, yes, we're doing that, but we are, one thing I want to say is we are not closing the Manor as of today or, and there hasn't been any, any talk about doing that.
Facebook is killing the Manor because everybody says, oh, they're closing the Manor. And I get on their S O guarantee, it's my closing.
What about the small fire we had out there, does the problem associated with that, they take care of for this year?
So inspections are up to date.
What?
The inspections are up to date.
I don't know about that, I don't know if the inspections are up to date, I do know that it's been, it's been worked on.
Well, the reason I ask, and this was something Beth and I, I'm trying to think, I'm trying to understand the Manor, quite frankly. In the article written, it said there were some inspections that were out of date, but it didn't identify those. But then, I, I guess to kind of jump off of Jeff's conversation, I'm still not clear what it is.
What the Manor is?
Yes.
Is the residential side.
Well, and that's what I heard and that's what it was described as, more of a boarding house situation, correct? I mean, that's how the fire department, what it was, what it said in public forum. But then when I attended that state the Manor meeting, I was completely lost because there was a lot of talk about care and volumes of paperwork. Well, a boarding house situation doesn't really involve care, so I can't figure out what it is. Everyone challenged everyone to tell fifty people.
She's asking if we were in a nursing home.
What is it?
We're not in a nursing home, no. Once you need more care, go do another one.
Is that what, is that what you're asking, isn't it?
I'm just trying to figure out what it, what is it? Is it a boarding house as that was described by the fire department?
A boarding house?
That's what it was described as when you had.
No, it's a residential, but it's a, it's a residential facility, like a lot of other group homes that are out there for different things. Yes.
Is it licensed? Is there oversight by the state? I've been trying to find out those, and I can't seem to.
I've been trying since August to figure out.
So is it licensed? Do y'all have a license for it?
I've never seen one.
Okay.
Have you seen one?
It's not a nursing home, it doesn't come under, a nursing home.
Yeah, it doesn't come under the nursing home.
No.
Somebody doing your laundry, somebody cooking your nails under that.
So I guess, Lauren, my challenge is, I was completely lost at the state the Manor meeting because I thought they were gonna talk about the issue with the fire. We were talking about volumes of paperwork and it kept, the reoccurring word was always care. I don't under, I mean, are we in the elder care business, I guess it's bluntly? Are we passing medications, are we assisting with bathing and dressing, what are we doing? I think before you can ask people to sell something, you have to identify what occurs.
We have had Ted look it over and he says that we are in complete compliance with everything and that there's no problem with the medication situation or anything.
But as, you know, I forget who it was, a cent tell fifty people, how do we do that?
How do I do what?
How, my residents, how do we give county medication at the Manor? I mean, there's rules.
Right, and we are in compliance with those rules. We asked Ted specifically that in the last two or three, last two meetings. And I wish he were here to explain it, but he, he, he has reviewed it and said, because we are not a nursing home and we don't have a nursing home license, we don't have to live up to all the rules of a nursing home.
I agree, but the letter to the editor said we were dressing a surgical wound of some lady, which I believe in.
It wasn't a surgical.
Having housing for seniors and those who can't afford some of the housing or whatever. But those are very different, I mean, care came up a lot. I mean, the letter was heartbreaking and, I mean, we're hearing great things about the Manor.
Manor, terrific place.
But I, I can't grasp what it is.
The situation that you're talking about was not a surgical problem, it was just, it was a problem with her toe and they were caring for it. You're not gonna not care for somebody that has a problem. I mean, they weren't stitching it up or, you know, giving her medication for it or anything like that.
It's just almost similar to a jail.
You said surgical, that means to me that.
It is.
But the jail has medical.
Not twenty-four seven. There've been plenty times I worked over there, I had to care for wounds that I was trained to do by the medical standard.
I'll send you back what was sent to me and it describes very bluntly what is allowed and what isn't allowed in a unlicensed facility. Because that's my understanding, is it's unlicensed.
That's my understanding, too, that I've never seen one. Dale?
Two things, I hope I can remember both. It almost sounds like, and we've not talked about anything, but it almost sounds like your question is, you were asked, or the people were asked to basically market, help market the county home, but you, to, in order to market it, you gotta know what you're marketing.
You know, to be, I mean, I have looked at this for a long time, I looked on the chamber, I looked on our county site, there is nothing that exists. So.
To me, it's almost like it's a, in my mind, it's always been like it's a assisted living type situation. To me, it's almost like it's a, uh, in my mind, it's always been like it's a, uh, assisted living type situation. So I don't, I wouldn't, in my mind, I wouldn't consider it a nursing home and I wouldn't consider anything less than a, uh, an assisted living facility. But I don't know if that.
I think you're just right on.
meshes with everything or not?
The, the Manor is a facility that is, uh, it's one sixteen county homes left in the state of Indiana. Uh, maybe it was eighteen, sixteen or eighteen.
I think it's plus the manor, I think we're down to seven, right?
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I can only find two of it, you know, I just.
It, it offers a home setting, it offers a beautiful facility, it offers absolutely cleanliness in, in every way. The food is good, uh, uh, it has a caring atmosphere of people who are out there. And it offers it to, at a cost that is, is phenomenal. Um, I was talking to a lady within the last week who was telling me about this. She was having to pay for her mother seventy-three hundred dollars a month.
I can tell you very much what those fees are and that's why I am questioning people so hard on this.
That's why you're questioning.
You are less than a sixth of the cost of most assisted living.
I think our private base is under two thousand dollars.
Huh?
Eighteen hundred and something.
Yeah, eighteen hundred and something. I go. It's just phenomenal what you, what that means is the way I understand it, to most elderly people who are going into a nursing facility and it's a real nursing home and they gotta pay eight grand a month or something to be in there, it means they lose everything. They lose their home, they lose, lose whatever assets they had, everything goes to the nursing home and then what's left, uh, that they still owe has to be paid by the go. But we're offering something here that is affordable, that most people can pay on their social security, have some left over and live a decent life. And I, I, I am.
Then why isn't it on the website?
What?
Why isn't it on the county website? Why aren't, why doesn't the chamber have, people we give money to are not promoting it? And if.
You'll have to ask the chamber that. I, I don't know.
We give our money as taxpayers. We have every year. We give it to economic development. It seems like, it, it seems like a great place, don't get me wrong. But I still understand if, if it's more responsibility or our responsibility as county taxpayers, why are we not giving it more props? And I just think it's because, so what can I do about it?
We dealt with that for a long time. And one of the reasons we came up with back there years ago was, well, it was difficult to rent a whole second floor because it was, uh, there was no elevator. And it's difficult for people to go up and down. So we tackled that many years ago and built an elevator and a nice, uh, uh, reception room, visiting room on it and, uh, it's a place where they use it for all, multi-purpose rooms for all sorts of things. And we built an elevator. So now, I mean, before they had all those little chairlift things that went around and that, it's very, and there was a lot of the elderly people that were afraid to get on that thing and take off, were afraid they're gonna fall off of it. So now there's an elevator. Um, the restrooms have all been upgraded, upgraded. The question of why we don't get more people in there, I think, I think if there was any one thing I could say that Martha should have done better, be put it on more, things like that. Or put on more, have a website, have more things like that going. Uh, she has never, in recent times, had a full staff. She doesn't have resources for help. Uh, there's only so much that, uh, somebody like that can do by herself. Um, she has all part-time help.
But I guess I would challenge the three of you.
Well, I, I get that a lot.
You three have some responsibility too. You know, it falls under.
She's saying that some of the responsibility.
You can blame whoever.
Because we have a step up to that.
I, I am really surprised that it's not on the chamber and.
I couldn't find, I found it incident once.
Last time she was in trouble and there was talk about closing down. It got turned around and she advertised, she, she made brochure, she had it.
I did not find it. I found it one time and it was listed as rescue care and adult daycare. It didn't say anything about.
When I sat on the council, I was one of the ones that voted to make it self-efficient like we did transfer sections. Um, it did very well. It was making money. COVID did. COVID hurt the Manor badly. Because she was to the point, she was paying all the insurances out there, paying most of her bills. And she had a full house, she had like twenty-five to twenty-six people.
This is pre-COVID?
Yes, pre-COVID. It was doing wonderful. I was very impressed that it came out like it did. Because I was concerned when I moved into, one of my votes to move it to be self-efficient. I never said I was gonna close it, but that's like a business, it needs to be self-efficient. And it did very well until COVID hit. She couldn't have anybody come in and look at the place because she had to quarantine. And she quarantined for almost two years. And so you went from twenty-five to twenty-six and it was down to nine to ten people. That's not gonna pay the bills. And some of them are government pay, which is only like twelve hundred dollars. That don't go very far. So now that we're out of this pandemic and we get the support of the people that like we did the last time, I think the Manor is gonna come back fully and strong. We're gonna have to do our homework on who we hire to put out there.
Well, and you need to make sure your inspections are up to date and that it.
Well, yeah, well, you know, that's the day-to-day business of the person we hired to put in. So, and, you know, I wish we can all be here full-time. I work a full-time job. Right now, I'm using a vacation day to be here. That's how dedicated in I am to this county. The last, I don't know, I've been in office almost twelve years. I've never went on vacation in twelve years with my family. So that's my dedication to this county.
I understand that, Steve, that it still has to be safe. I mean, the fire being out there.
Right, and you have to trust the people you put in. We put in Beth to make sure our hooks, we put in Melinda to make sure the money's there, the sheriff. We just, we got two awesome people back here right now. Right. Did I say that right?
You did.
And, you know, we, you, we gotta put our trust into those people that, that they do their job right, because we're not here five days a week, forty hours a week to put our finger on top of. That's why you put these wonderful people in positions we do.
Lisa? When this came up about three months ago, I was approached by, uh, from inside the Manor and asked if I would help market and, you know, work with them and do this and do that on Facebook and different social media sites. I agreed. I was eating Chinese one day about a week later up in Kokomo, I got a phone call, will you do this, will you do that? I agreed. I haven't heard a word from them since. So it's not these guys that, you know, they don't control the chamber's website or anything like that.
But we could, they control our own, the council thing.
Uh, that's always, that's always up in the air.
Here. Your department heads have been told that they can give us information that is put on that website. That's the only way that I can put that on there is from, from the department head. Or they can get permission to put it on their own and then I have to publish it. So, again.
The county home is being listed.
There is a disconnect. You're right. But it's not necessarily.
I searched, it wasn't that, I mean, because I believe in having safe, of course, senior housing. I'll, I'll check that out because that's.
The only further response I have is one of the criteria that we've all, that we have put out is when we're hiring a new manager, is they must be somebody that can, uh, uh, work with media like that and, and try to attract more people. That has to be a priority, is getting more people in there. Um, and I, I think we're gonna get it. Let's go ahead to, uh.
I have something else about Carroll Manor.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry.
Um, we need to approve her, um,
Yes.
rollover for her vacation. For this year, she has filed, filed a paper, but I guess it's not with me. Um, but it was a four to forty-nine hours carryover and she's done her, the way it's supposed to be done. And now it's up to you to approve that, so I can.
Okay, so I'm gonna entertain a motion to that.
I'll move it, please. I'll say.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the forty-nine hour vacation carryover for Martha Lewis. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
We also have the family. That was the transfer she did at, in the year four, for this, so. Thank you.
And who else has a question?
There was a couple, yes.
Mr. Quinsey?
We spoke at the December nineteenth meeting, update on jail, and we said we'd come back out in the hall and talk a little more, thought we'd just give a general update if that's okay?
Sure.
Happy New Year.
Yeah.
Um, we've been working since that, that meeting in, uh, trying to identify policies with the broad, we've mentioned a lot of this a couple times. With the design aspects and throw out every idea that's possible without changing the overall use of the facility. Um, we have about twenty-three items currently that will contribute cost savings that we don't think impact the scope negatively for the shared operating facility. Um, hopefully, we will have the actual pricing for those items on the next meeting on the sixteenth. We'll plan on presenting at the sixteenth as well as coming to the council meeting on the nineteenth, I believe, is the meeting. Um, instead of a joint meeting, if we needed a joint meeting, we can, but we can't propose those. Also, we have spoken, uh, with a few additional bidders. So, um, there were some packages that we just weren't a little happy with where the numbers were outside of potential cost savings ideas. Um, and then we've got at least a half a dozen, maybe more, um, bidders in.